Can you give it 30 seconds?
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're doing our last segment, and I want to thank everyone for being here and participating in this. I'll say my concluding statements now rather than wait till the end, but thank you again to Ben and the panel for participating, and all the candidates that have chosen to run, because those of you that get elected, it's our job, as those that are serving know that. This is the first time that Ben and I have done this as per city council. I've done this before. I filmed the chamber event, and I have done a couple of ambulance ones. But if you see me in the street or whatever, if you have any suggestions, I intend to get some curtains to go across here. It was my intention when I set my technology up that we'd have a tight shot, but you'll see on the camera it shows a little bit more what we planned on. But we're open to suggestion. The goal, I think, just as you guys are that are running for council, is we're doing this because we love living in our community, and we want to make it a better community. And I'm open to suggestion on how we can do this better. One of the reasons we're doing it this way with a minimal of equipment, microphones, this is hard to mic up. If we had all the candidates up here and one microphone goes bad, then it's a problem. So this was an effort to try to minimize the equipment that we needed to use. And ideally, I would like to keep all the candidates isolated, bring them in one at a time, not show them the questions, and have them wing it, but that's just not practical. We did that with the ambulance last year, and it's hard to put you guys all in one room for what would be two or three hours with this many candidates. So we're just doing the best we can, and I hope when this is all said and done that you stop me and say, hey Tom, what about this, or to Ben. And again, when you go onto YouTube, like, share, and subscribe to Trinidad Times TV and get your family and everybody to watch this. This is encouraging to me that we have this many people running. It really is. It means that people really care. We don't all have to agree, but I've seen some apathy in people as far as getting involved in government, and that's really disappointing. It's like, we can debate national politics all we want, but that's all it is, it's a debate. Guys, if you run for office and you get elected, you have a direct impact. So with that being said, the last segment, we're going to vote Sky, and then Manny, and then Keely, and Aaron. And you're up. Give me a second, get your graphics up. There you are. Give me the thumbs up. And you're on. Oops, let me get my microphone. Okay, Sky, question number one, why are you running for city council, and what inspired you to run for city council?
Well, I came to Trinidad to work for the city, and while I was working for the city, I started a lot of good work. I got to know tons of people in the development industry, and people who were coming to town to invest. And it's that inspiration and the work that I started that I'd like to continue. I started working on things that could make our city better, from policies on sidewalks to trying to solve our housing crisis. And I believe I can, I'm in a good position to bring to the table creative solutions, looking at other communities that are like Trinidad, see what's working, see what's not working, and make things happen here. I'm also very inspired by a slate of competent, professional, and inspiring people who are also running for council. So I want to get on to council with a team of new people who are going to work together to help make this the great place that it has the potential to be. And I feel like this moment in Trinidad is a critical moment. At this moment, Trinidad's population hasn't grown since 1940, more or less. And now, people are wanting to move here. People are looking at this city from other places, and they're seeing a future here. But it's hard to move here because you can't find a place to live. And it's hard to move here because there's not quite enough jobs, there's not quite enough diversity of industry and economy. And I want to help Trinidad make that next step, go just beyond the finish line. We're right at the cusp of being able to cross. And I think I want to be a part of that. I want to be there at the table when all this has happened.
Okay, question number two, what makes you feel you're the best candidate for council? And what is your most valuable experiences you're bringing to the table, and how will this experience benefit the city?
Well, I've got an educational background that I think makes me qualified. I have a master's in urban planning. I also have a master's in philosophy and literature, which is going to be less qualifying, but. And I've lived all over the world. I spent a couple of years living in Europe, I lived in Germany and Austria, I lived in Japan, I spent a year living in New Zealand. And I've seen cities and towns all over the place, and I think we live in a real gem right here. I also have experience working with city councils. I have experience working right now, my job is under the plan of the Warrnambool County. And so I'm working with diverse communities out there, we're working on housing projects, I'm working with people who are connected at the state level, and working with players all across the board who are involved in every aspect of development out there. And so I think I understand the ways that our ordinances and our codes interact with the private industry and with community and create opportunities. And this is work that I'm passionate about, and I think being on city council would be an extension of doing work that I'm already passionate about.
Okay, question number three, how will you balance the needs of all constituents, including longtime residents, transplants, working-class adults, families, ranchers, farmers, youth, et cetera?
Well, in my previous career, I was a high school history teacher. And as a high school teacher, you kind of get all constituents, you get a whole cross-section in the city unions. Everybody comes to your classroom, and you've got to make sure every one of them gets the most out of your class. And so I think with that experience, you know, I've spent a long time working with people who are not at all like myself. También hablo español, y puedo escuchar a la comunidad hispana aquí, y puedo comunicar con los otros también. And I think, right now, I'm working up in Warrnambool County, and so I'm working with ranchers and farmers, and working with people who are deeply involved in the rural economy around us. And I think what I'm learning up there in my experience with that community is that the city and its surrounding countryside are part of the same labor market, they're part of the same economy. And so we have to make our city a hub that brings people together. You know, Trinidad's in a unique position. We are the only, we are the city for 100 miles in any direction. We are really a regional center. And so we need to work with Rattaw, we need to work with Walsenburg, we need to reach out to our regional partners and make sure that people are coming to Trinidad to do their shopping. People are coming to Trinidad with their products and what they're making, and the environment around us.
Okay, question number four, how will you deal with inner council conflicts, council citizen conflicts? What does conflict resolution look like to you?
Well, there could be all kinds of different conflicts, but you know, I think one thing that I would do should something come up that's really controversial is just go slow. Slow down, make sure you look into all your options, make sure you give people in the community who are anxious about a decision a chance to chime in, to do their research, maybe do a study. Make sure that the decisions that we make are grounded in something, in something more than our whim or our feeling, or I don't like this idea, but it turns out to be a good idea for the community, and other people like it. Well, I think move and go beyond yourself, but being selfless is an important part of being on council. And what council does isn't really decide what happens in the city. We create on council an environment in which private industry, in which individual actors, in which all of you can make the best possible decisions to make your fortune. And so I think resolving conflict is really about making sure everybody gets to the table, everyone feels heard, and that whatever comes out addresses the multiple needs as best as possible.
And number five, what does government transparency mean to you?
Well, it means a lot of things. I think a lot of it's about record-keeping, about access to records. If you go on the city webpage, you can't find anybody's phone number or email, you can't find elected officials' email. That's kind of weird. You go to any other city's webpage, and you can contact your city council. So sure, I could say like, I'll be here, listen to you if you want to come talk to me, but try to find me on the webpage. And I think just making sure that we're out there is one thing, but also making sure that we have good documentation, we put our records, you can find resolution, that when you go to a city council meeting today, you can download the agenda offline, but you can't download the packet. What's up with that? You can't see the information that councilors are seeing to make their decisions. They might be making the right decisions, they might not be, but we don't know what's informing them. And so I think that creates controversy, and it creates scandal, and it creates rumor because we see what the result is, we see how people voted, but we don't see why. And those packets will go a long ways to telling people why people voted the way they did. And it's not up to councilors to just tell their group of friends why they voted the way they did. It needs to be easy for people to find out without having to ask. Should even ask for a packet, you can get those, those are public records, but you shouldn't have to ask.
Okay, question number six, what are your top three project priorities, capital improvements, programming, adjusting things at City Hall, et cetera?
Well, one of the inspirations I've taken from Trinidad is that I came here so as to really look at how to solve the same problem that every other city in the country is trying to solve, which is what do we do about housing? How do we address this urgent, desperate need that's making people leave wealthy, great cities like Denver and come to little places like this where they can afford something? How do we address housing? That is like one of the most important questions that I think every city, every city in the country is asking right now. And I think I have an answer to that. I've been writing a book that's probably going to be published early next year on zoning proposal that can shift the paradigm, preserve what matters to us, preserve our historic character, but also unlock the housing market. You know, it's not just about zoning. Zoning is an important part of addressing housing, you also need to bring in money and capital and grants and private projects. But I think zoning is one of those important building blocks to addressing the housing need. I think another thing is making sure that we've got a vibrant main street, making sure that all of our storefronts are full. We are on the precipice right now, we are looking into the wine dark sea of the future, saying, what is going to happen if all these pot shops go out of business? What is going to happen? And especially, what is going to happen if it all happens at once? Right now, I'm working on a ordinance for Warrnambool County to make Warrnambool County the second jurisdiction in the state to adopt marijuana consumption bars, and that's going to probably come out in the World Journal in a week or two. And I think Trinidad needs to do something like that, too. You may not smoke pot, but we need to make sure that these industries don't fail, and that they don't fail all at once.
Okay, I'm going to combine three questions because you have a minute thirty. So what do you see as the future of Trinidad's economy? What is your overall vision for Trinidad for the next four years? And then lastly, what project accomplishments of this current council do you see as being the biggest benefits to the city's development?
Trinidad needs to diversify its economy. That's been said by other candidates all reiterated. We need a diverse economy, a robust economy that can handle and support and give success to all kinds of people. What that means is we need to attract industry, we need to take advantage of our rail port. We've got this great port here for rail, and we just need to make stuff that we can put on, and we could revive the brick industry. We need to connect with the natural resources here in our region and improve their value. My vision for Trinidad for the next four years is to be a part of this community, to listen to everybody, and to really try to make this a playing field where everybody can succeed. Where where some people fail a few times, and then they succeed their third or fourth try. And I think the last question is, you know, what do I see as accomplishments in the city council? I think they've been doing some good work. The city's just brought in a elevation land trust to start working with affordable housing. I commend them for that. The city's been working for a number of years on the Fox Theater to refurbish that, bringing in big names like Dana Crawford to help put the city up. Things that are beyond the city's work, but that make a big difference for us, our Fisher's Peak, our ability to kind of tap into a recreation economy. Si Michaels has just put a hotel right downtown where it needs to be. And I think, you know, there's been some other little things. I think the city works well, you don't notice that it's working well. When things are going well, you just go get your life, and you go shopping, and you get your house, you do whatever you do, and you don't have to pay attention to city council. And that's what I want to do on city council. I want to be a councilor that nobody has to pay any attention to, because we are making the city work, we're making the gears turn, we're paying attention to what's underground, which you can't see, making sure that our water is supported. We all know that we've got to fix our streets, and we all know that it's way, way cheaper to fix streets before they're all awful and broken. We've got to throw a lot of things before they're in a disastrous situation, and then their lifespan extends. So Trinidad's here, it's been here for a couple hundred years, it'll be here for another thousand years, and we have to do infrastructure projects here in Trinidad that are worth a lull. I think my time's up.
What's your last name?
Paul.
Paul.
I got some sign language.
Manny, sorry, you're next. Manny, give me a second, Manny, to find your, no, go ahead. I've got it, okay. Let me bring it down, and give me a thumbs up, and I'll start your time. All right, you're good. Manny, question number one, why are you running for city council, and what inspired you to run for council?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Manuel Trigio. Everyone knows me as Manny. I'm a lifelong resident. I was born here. My family's been here since way before it was Colorado. So our roots are strong. We've seen Trinidad come up and come down. In my business, I have a good connection with the community. We sit and we talk back and forth with different members that come in. I have professionals, women that come in and see me. I also have laypeople that come in that work for the city. I have numerous, numerous and various clients that come in. Our discussions are mostly about how proud they are to be citizens of Trinidad, and sometimes the problems that we have in Trinidad. And most of the time, it's more pride, and I want to be part of that. That's why I want to run for council, to actually be part of the growth that has happened and has come from this current administration that we actually have. So that's part of why I want to do this. I want to be part of this growth and the future of Trinidad.
Okay, question number two, what makes you feel you're the best candidate for council? And what is your most valuable experience you're bringing to the table? How will this experience benefit the city?
Have a good year. I'm a very, very, very good listener. I've been an advocate for senior citizens' rights in the past. I still do that daily. People come in, we talk, we try to get them in contact with people in the city, people in different organizations throughout the city of Trinidad, and get them on the right path, and give them as much help as we possibly can, because that is the community that we live in. We do have a very diverse culture here. We have a new young, outdoor recreational-driven people that are coming in right now, our local citizens, more or less, we do have that background where they need a little more help. And we need to provide those resources for them, and we do have great resources for them that are underutilized and underpromoted. I would love to see our city take a bigger step in involved with certain entities, council of governments, DHS, utilizing the resources that we have, you know, and allowing them to know that this is what we can do for you, and this is what we can provide you, because we want our citizens to be safe, and we want them to prosper, and we want them to have well-being.
Number three, how will you balance the needs of all constituents, including longtime residents, transplants, working-class adults, families, ranchers, farmers, youth, et cetera?
Well, I think we have, I think we've done that so far. We are very welcoming to the community. I agree with Mr. Zedany, when he said it, transplants is the wrong word for it, they are newcomers. And we do welcome them in with open arms. Ideas may not always be accepted, but they grow as others. And we are about to change, and we've proven that in the last twenty to thirty years. We have really proven that we are up for change. And I mean, like I said, once again, the direction that we've gone is just, it's all positive, and I want to see it grow even more.
Question number four, how will you deal with inner council conflicts, council citizen conflicts, and what does conflict resolution look like to you?
Well, from what I've seen in the past, and what I've actually heard in my chair, a lot of people feel their voices aren't heard when they go to council, and that's because of the rules of decorum. We've talked to the, everybody's pretty well familiar with that. It's hard when you move through and get the courage to come up to a place and speak, and you have, you have your council members just kind of pretty much thanking you and moving on. I believe that they would like to see a follow-through, you know, a direction where they'd like to go, you know, somebody with a follow-up email, something simple to know that their voices have been heard, and to feel that they've been acknowledged, that they're part of the community, you know, and that's kind of what I would like to see going forward, if that's a simple change that we can address. Those are small changes, we can do those, and it's not a hard thing to do.
Okay, question number five, what does government transparency mean to you?
Well, I think we do a great job of that, pretty much see-through. I think everything I've ever asked for at the city has always been provided directly. You know, there are court requests that have to be filled out for certain things to have to go through, but there's a reason for those, because certain things do not need to be made public because they're personal. And our community, I think, understands that, you know, if there are HR relations, things that have, HR matters that have gone through, you can't make those public. People don't understand that, you know, and we need to let them know, this is an HR matter, we can't go any further, you know, and I think that's where we need to be in our transparency. You know, everything else, pretty well clear. You can go on the website, pull up anything that you need. I do agree with, I believe Sky said, you know, go through and say that it's not accessible with email addresses and phone numbers and all that there. Simple fixes. Those are things that can be in problem solutions, we can figure it out, and I think we'll move forward on that, and that will actually be a great improvement for the community. We want to generate pride, that's one of the ways we can do it, because then we're accessible.
Okay, question number six, what are your top three project priorities as far as capital improvements, programming, adjusting things at City Hall, et cetera?
Like I said, the city is going in a great, in a great direction. I actually have the privilege of leaving my cell at home. I've been working in my business for fifteen years, and I've been very, very dedicated. I don't get a chance to get out much, so when I did finally get a chance to get out, it was beautiful. I mean, to see the town just transition from fifteen years ago to now, you know, I had the privilege of walking into the Hilton, and it is beautiful, it is a jewel, it was something we needed. And I thank everybody that actually went through it and put all that hard work into it to bring that to fruition, it just was beautiful. Same thing in the past, we saw the Le Quinze flourish. I mean, just beautiful projects that have come up through, walking downtown and looking what has happened through the, I believe it's Trinidad Construction Group, that has put through and made these buildings just beautiful. Storefronts that are amazing, products and goods that were not available to us before are now available to us. I mean, I was like a kid in Candyland, just kind of hopping through, walking into Colby's and getting an amazing scone, oh my god, that was amazing. So that's what the direction I want to see it go. Also, I would like to see a little bit of restructuring in the city operations. We've grown, you know, and that's one thing, we've grown. We have positions that may be obsolete, we have positions that those people need to be moved into new positions, to where they are fruitful, to where they are going to be more beneficial, to where they're going to aid in building some of the minor questions and allowing our city manager, for example, to be able to do his job in the harder questions, you know, working on the task to lead our city the way that he needs to lead it and put us in the direction that we need to go, you know, because, you know, most of the times, a lot of those calls he's dealing with is dog at large, you know?
Okay, question number seven, how do you see city council helping to secure proper funding for the city to address its infrastructure needs, programming needs, and special project needs?
Well, it's been said a million times today, grants, grants, and grants. I would love to see a development of a position to where we actually have a grant department with an actual, with a grant writer and a grant executor. I think that would be a great position that we could have in the city that we could utilize for funding and allow it to grow, you know, someone that's dedicated to it, allowing freedom for some of the other directors to be able to say, you know, we need to do our jobs and not focus just on the grants, that we need to survive for our departments, you know, so that's one thing I would like to see. Also, the horrible thing of tax incentives, but initiatives, there possibly is going to be a need for in the future. We know that that's coming. We are behind the rest of the state. The rest of the state has already moved way far ahead of us, and for us to keep up, we're going to have to look into those things, and it's unfortunate, but this may not be the time, maybe next year might be the time, maybe the year after, but we have to look at those avenues to see. If we need to increase certain mills, that's what we need to do, you know, but we need to grow.
Okay, I'm going to combine questions eight and nine. What do you see as the future of Trinidad's economy, and what steps would you take to move the city towards that goal during your first four years in council? And what's your overall vision for the next four years?
The next four years, I would love to see, I would love to see the growth that is planned, and I believe there is a plan in place, and it looks like we are going in that direction. I'd love to see a little bit more, more growth and more, the word escapes me now, but involvement with the education of our kids. That's the one thing that I believe that we have been overlooking all the way through. We keep talking about recreation, we also need youth recreation. It's great to bring in outdoor recreation, but we need to have recreation for our kids. Parents will come here with their children if we have things for them. You know, we need a new rec center, we haven't had a community center in umpteen years. I think it's time that we start looking into that direction, those things that we can have for the kids to go in that direction. I do know that the other thing I was looking at was, we do need school districts to work with us at the city, you know, to go through and tell us what they need. Communication is key.
Okay, and number ten, what project accomplishments of this current council do you see as being the biggest benefits to the city's development?
Oh, excuse me. That's been an amazing thing. I think it is going to be beneficial, because it did bring something massive that we're going to, we're going to be able to grow upon. I think we have the trails out there, I've been wanting to go out there, I have not unfortunately had the chance to go out there, but I do want to go out there and see it, because it does look, it does look beautiful from where we're at, and we've been part of that. First street, I think that was great, yeah, it took a while, but yeah, I got done. And now we have a beautiful road to drive down, you know?
And one minute. Your time.
Oh. I just want to thank everybody in the community that has given me, has given me the business that I have at home and the privilege to work on. I have a lifestyle that I really do appreciate because of the community, and this is the only way I can think of giving back to everyone. There's no way to send flowers to every single one of my clients, there's no way to buy them all dinner, but the best way I can think of is public service. And if I can give myself to them in a whole, that's what I want. Thank you so much.
Twenty-five seconds.
Appreciate that.
All right. Keely, give me a second to find your name on here. Right here. If I adjust this, I'll lose this. Why don't you do a test one, two, three right there?
Test one, two, three.
Get a little bit closer to the mic.
Test one, two, three.
There you go, there you go. Okay, give me a thumbs up, and we'll start the timer. Okay, and you're on. Okay, Keely, question number one, why are you running for city council? What inspired you to run for city council? For council?
So my name's Keely Williams, and my slogan is a blueprint for Trinidad, and I'll explain a little bit more about what that means in the subsequent questions, but why I wanted to run for council was that I love Trinidad, and it wasn't, I didn't always love Trinidad, I didn't know about Trinidad. I moved here a couple, to Colorado a couple years ago, from New Orleans, and I And I have been in New Orleans for about two decades, and I had an entire career there. So I definitely came to Colorado kicking and screaming a little bit. And when I started, we started in Denver, and we started moving a little more south to Pueblo. And we had a summer where we went around the state, because we really wanted that small town feel. We were looking for a place where we could revitalize historic buildings. And Dana Crawford got ahold of me, and she said, I think you need to look at Trinidad. And I said, where's Trinidad? But then I said, okay. And I went down to look at Terry's Home Market. And I made an offer on the building the next day. And that's how quick it was for me to realize that this had all the pieces and the parts that I loved in the community. So I started working here, mainly doing construction on our building. And I got more and more involved in the community. I'm an architect by trade. I have master's degree in historic preservation and architecture. And I wanted to fix up old buildings. And so I got more and more involved in the community. I started serving on the Coxas Theater Board. And those are the things that have really led me to want to get even more involved now in council and become a council member for the city.
Question number two. What makes you feel you're the best candidate for council? And what is your most valuable experience you are bringing to the table? How would this experience benefit the city?
So I'm a business person. I'm an architect. I work in construction. That's a pretty difficult field for a woman to work in, and it's, there's, there's a small handful of us out there, and hopefully there'll be more. And I spent my, I spent my career, most of my career in New Orleans. And particularly after Hurricane Katrina. So I was doing urban planning. I was rebuilding everything that made New Orleans great and what it was. And when I moved here, I noticed that this, this already has a lot going for it. So what I'm looking to do is fortify what we already have going for it and bring a business sense and systems to be able to execute that.
Question number three. How will you balance the needs of all constituents, including long-time residents, transplants, working-class adults, families, ranchers, farmers, youth, etc.?
Serving at the city council is service. It's public service. And we need to open up those lines of communication between our constituents and city council. And so I think this was mentioned in some of the earlier candidates' speeches, but yeah, there's some simple things we can do. There's our candidate, our city council's emails. We can't contact them directly. They're not on the website. How do you get ahold of your, your councilperson? How do you get ahold of your city staff? It doesn't have to be that difficult to send somebody an email. I spent some time this spring working a lot with the city, as the Development Services Director of the city. I used to go into our city manager's office and see little notes everywhere. It was, it was so hard to get ahold of our manager, and he would have these handwritten notes, and people abandoned things. And I just want to see that be a little bit more streamlined.
Question number four. How will you deal with inner council conflicts, council citizen conflicts, and what does conflict resolution look like to you?
So I'm not, I'm no stranger to conflict in this town. And it's, it comes from a place of care, of wanting to see us take that next step as a community. I think when you, I think, first of all, conflict is okay. Discourse is okay. When I was working with the city, we had a problem with a festival that was coming to town. It was, it's upcoming. It's the Rad Festival. We needed to get a little bit more organized than we were previous years. So what I did, I said, let's, let's put it out to communicate so we can hear what their, their problems are. And I had the first town hall that we've, that Trinidad's seen in many years, and it was great. We had a lot of good feedback. We got reports from there. We understood, you know, why trucks shouldn't go through certain neighborhoods, where the parking was going to go. I was able to draw maps and plans. And, you know, I have to complain second, because I still haven't seen some of those things executed. And that's where it gets a little bit frustrating for me. As a councilperson, I want to connect those dots. I want to see the work that we're doing and the plans that we're making and the feedback that we're getting put into action.
Okay. And five. What does government transparency mean to you?
I like things to happen in a public forum. I like our city staff and for our city commissioners and for our council to be accessible to people. Karen Greigel mentioned earlier that a lot of times she hasn't opened her policy with her business. And with our business, called The Well, we have that too. So we're always on Main Street. We're always walking around. We're very accessible. We hear a lot about what people care about in town. And so I would love to be a conduit for those conversations to occur and for, to flow. Because I think a lot of times, we have more in common than we do differences. And it's just that, it's just connecting those dots and providing good communication.
Okay. Question number six. What are your top three project priorities as far as capital improvements, programming, adjusting things at City Hall, etc.?
So I think that good policy begins with good quality of life. And we are very fortunate, because we have a really excellent city manager right now. I don't know if anybody's been paying attention to the Colorado Buffs with their new coach, Coach Brian. He's our coach, Steve Rieger is our coach Brian, and we need to give him the support that he needs to move some initiatives forward and do what he's really specialized at, which is managing staff in a very professional way, and also to just engage council and manage council as well.
Okay. Question number seven. How do you see city council helping to secure proper funding for the city to address its infrastructure needs, programming needs, and special project needs, etc.?
City council is, is the decision-makers of a lot of these things. City staff wants to execute it. I, I'm a business person. I go out and I get funding for my businesses. I was very successful in doing this for the city with my time there. I got us Destination Blueprint to the Office of Economic Development. That's providing a blueprint for our tourism initiatives. And that doesn't cost us any money. It's just a hundred free hours of consulting from industry leaders. And it could amount in millions and millions of dollars in sustainable tourism. So that's one example of some of the things I've done. You know, one, one thing that we really need to look into with our infrastructure is the IIJA program, which is a part of the Build Back Better Plan, Biden's Build Back Better Plan, that's trickled down to the state level. Now, here's the problem, is that we've missed quite a few deadlines for that. A lot of these, a lot of this money isn't matching, and the state also offers administrative assistance for some of this stuff. So what I don't want to see us do moving forward is missing opportunities, because there's so many that's available to us as a local community, and we're down twenty-seven percent year-over-year on the revenue. We need to capitalize on those opportunities.
Okay, I'm going to combine questions eight and nine. What do you see as the future of Trinidad's economy? And what steps would you take to move the city towards that goal during your first four years in council? And nine, what is your overall vision for Trinidad for the next four years?
One thing I was working really closely with the city was bringing manufacturing to Trinidad. I was successful in doing so with the Colorado Santofo Company. So maybe our future doesn't look, maybe our, our future doesn't look like coal mining necessarily, if the market isn't there. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't have manufacturing and industry. We, we have seven percent more suddenly than Denver, Colorado. So if you're a farmer, you can come down here and have seven percent more yield. And we have very good direct access to all sorts of markets around I-25. So a lot of times, companies can come here, industries can come here, and they can thrive because of the lower real estate costs compared to Denver, the good transportation access. PNSF has an amazing access, the rail has an amazing access to the Sutter Triangle and container ports, things like that. So we just want to make sure that, that the city and the city council, that we maintain those relationships with folks in other markets who are looking to move here and looking to create jobs for our local community.
Okay. And the last question, with two minutes left. What projects accomplishments of this current council do you see as being the biggest benefits to the city's development?
And I have to echo everyone about Fisher's pee. And I do think, I do think that this council has demonstrated a lot of infrastructure wins. It's, it's not sexy. You don't always see it, but they have pushed a lot of things forward. And I, I've seen, I've seen it from, you know, the person who's in the building industry. I've seen us really increase our fiber. I've seen us work towards better solar policies. I've seen us work towards just more construction in general. And so I have to applaud the current council for their work in infrastructure, and I hope that I can add to that.
Minute sixteen. It's all yours.
Minute sixteen. Minute sixteen?
Eleven now.
The average age in Trinidad is sixty-two. So this, this community has done a great job taking care of me. And what I'd like to do is take care of our aging population. This should be an amazing place to retire. This should be an amazing place to raise kids. And we're already there. We just, we just got to fortify it and have a blueprint, blueprint for the future, which is, that's what I'm running on.
Forty-four.
My dad is a baby viewer. He's seventy-two. And he had a long career in government. He really wore the white hat, and now he's retired. And he has dementia, which is, that's something that a lot of us are going through. And it's, it changes the relationship a little bit. It changes the way that you think about your city and how you make decisions. You really want people to be comfortable. You really want people to be able to access everything that an able-bodied person can. If I'm elected, that's something that's going to be coursing through my veins as I make decisions.
And you're done. Thank you.
Can I talk for a while before I give you a thumbs up?
Just don't say anything political. All right. Give me a thumbs up and we'll start. You're, you're ready?
Ready.
Okay. All right, Darren. Question number one. Why are you running for city council? And what inspired you to run for city council?
First off, Tom, I did want to say thank you to Trinidad Times, Seven One Chronicle, and for everyone that's still here. Thank you very much. And especially for everyone that's still watching online. And it's a, it's different to sit through it online than in person, so thank you. Why I'm running, and it took a lot of thought, is I want to continue the work that I've been doing. I think it's important work. Everyone in this room today is here because they want to see Trinidad succeed, see Trinidad be better. I want to be part of that. And I think that my experience in my professional life, personnel management, bid evaluation specifically, is helpful to it. My previous council experience is helpful to it. When I got on city council nearly four years ago, I started asking for a strategic plan. It took time to do it, and that's not a complaint. Things have to fall into place to happen. So we're at the point where we are having a strategic plan, and I want to be part of that, as well as several other big things that are coming up. So that's why I ran, because I have a passion for Trinidad, and I want to see us all succeed in Trinidad.
Okay. Question number two. What makes you feel you're the best candidate for council? And what is your most valuable experience you are bringing to the table, and how would this experience benefit the city?
You know, it's, it's funny to say, maybe Mike Tyson, I think it was, said everyone has a plan until they get punched in the face. When you get on council, it is quite literally like being punched in the face with reality. The seriousness of it, the import of it, and the effort of it is bigger than people realize. And that's, that's not me in any way trying to war up other people. I think everybody here today that came here is ready for that challenge. But the fact of the matter is that I've already been punched in the face, and I'm ready to go to work. We have the strategic plan coming up. I think that's going to be super, super important, that that, that that happens efficiently and effectively. So my past experience, professional experience and council experience are why I think I'll make a strong candidate.
Number three. How will you balance the needs of all constituents, excuse me, including long-time residents, transplants, working-class adults, families, ranchers, farmers, youth, and etc.?
I think a lot of people have mentioned this already, but anytime that you divide groups based on differences of anything, I think that we're headed for trouble. A constituent is, is just that, a constituent. What we all need is a strong economy, a safe environment, and good infrastructure in town. I think that's the primary ten for all of us to work towards. If we can provide those three things, we'll be excelling. I would say that it is important that we potentially pay attention to aging citizens and younger citizens. I think we can do better in that area, and that's something that I would like to work towards.
Okay. Question number four. How will you deal with inner council conflicts, council citizen conflicts? What, what does conflict resolution look like to you?
So much as several people have alluded to, I think conflicts are really an opportunity for progress. It indicates that you have varying views and opinions, and I think that's important. So I think conflict should be used as an opportunity. What you do need to do is ensure that you treat each other with professionalism and respect. But open communication and professionalism, I think that would be my answer.
What does government, number five. What does government transparency mean to you?
There's, there's been a lot of great ideas brought forward today. Actually, if Ben was here, I was going to thank him. He mentioned the downloading, or being able to download the packet from the city website. I think that's a fantastic idea. We had a work session some time ago, and this isn't, this isn't meant to be an all-inclusive solution, but we did have a work session. And we, as a council, I'm pretty sure, and I have to go back and check, that we all agreed to have our number put on there. I would say that demonstrates a follow-up is important. You need to ensure that what you agree to happens. People should be able to get ahold of us. I'm willing to talk to people and they do get ahold of us. Transparency is a two-way street in effect. There's the people that are viewing the information, the people that have the information. Work sessions, first and second meetings, those contribute to transparency. And I do know, if you speak to the city manager, then he may be, you know, with difficulty, get ahold of, he's busy. But he's willing to release what information he can. And then there's also the tool of a court request, if it goes that far. So I think transparency is exceptionally important. It was one of the things I ran on the first time. So I want to see that be increased, and there are a lot of great ideas mentioned today.
Okay. And number six. What are your top three project priorities as far as capital improvements, programming, adjusting things at City Hall, etc.?
I'm going to answer this question by not answering this question, which I guess maybe that's a political thing to say. But the truth is, we're undergoing this strategic plan for Trinidad right now. And what it's intended to do is it's intended to determine where we are as an economy and where we need to go as an economy. And then the sole intention is to lay out measurable waypoints to get there. And they should be all-inclusive, economy, safety, and then infrastructure. Because you can't have one without the other. So we really need to focus on the strategic, strategic plan to get to a, an end goal of a thriving Trinidad. By having a planning place, that's going to really lessen any activity that isn't beneficial. So the planning will dictate where we need to go, and it's good. It includes several of the past attempts that we've made, the 2017 plan and other items like that.
Okay. Question number seven. How do you see city council helping to secure proper funding for the city to address its infrastructure needs, programming needs, special project needs, etc.?
You know, this, this has been pretty well answered too. Sorry, I thought you meant that. The, this has been answered well before. I think it's council's role to make decisions and authorize exp- and authorize expenditures. But what would be really important is that we give the staff, as, as many people have alluded to, the staff, they all have a lot of jobs to do, they all wear many hats. But anything that's bringing money into Trinidad should be prioritized. So council needs to find a way to really prioritize grant rider and a support team that does that. That's, that's my opinion. And I'd really like to work together with people to bring that to fruition.
Okay, combining questions number eight and nine. What do you see as the future of Trinidad's economy? And what steps would you take to move the city towards that goal during, well, this would be your second four years in council? And what is your overall vision for the next four years?
So again, I'll say the answer to that is there's just a strategic plan. You need a robust economy, and Trinidad has, as we've all said, has been through many booms and busts. I totally agree with, we need a multifaceted approach to an economy so that if one facet isn't as brightly shining as the next, you don't lose the whole basket of eggs. We need to put our eggs in different baskets. That strategic plan will do that. We have so many assets here that's been alluded to, art, architecture, archaeology, history, outdoor tour, outdoor sports, mountain biking, the bike, and, and many, many more than that. I have a whole vision board, I'll talk to anybody that wants to talk to. But if we bring more foot traffic to Trinidad, that also sustains other industries. If you bring people to town, they're gonna be able to come to Trinidad and say, "Hey, this is a great place to live," and open businesses here like many others have. So let's say you could potentially have someone from Texas, visits for a vacation, they're maybe gonna open a light industry such as a snow tire chain building, actually opening Quavo. We could have that here, but if we get people coming to Trinidad, they'll, they'll bring their hopes and dreams and hopefully institute those hopes and dreams in Trinidad.
Okay, and the last question with two minutes. What projects, accomplishments of this current council do you see as being the biggest benefits to the city's development?
I've, I've had a front row seat to that, so my, my list is probably gonna be bigger than other people's, and I'd be willing to talk to anybody after this, but I'm gonna just read it. You know, not everything has been done perfectly, we have rooms to improve, I would say that's another asset that I'll bring. Mistakes can be capitalized on, and if you don't repeat them, that's improvement. Here's a list though. We maintain a balanced budget for four years, we move towards utility rate stabilization, that's huge. We've had many major utility project upgrades, I'd be willing to talk about those after. Forward-looking visionary plans, some that are really exciting, those have been in a work session lately, I'd like to talk to people about that too if we want to. The Housing Now Project, strategic planning, Fox Theatre, Art Space, Land Swat for Better Recreation, Habitat in Trinidad, Americana Road Project, which is huge, Fisher's Peak State Park, obviously that's a big one, support of the Fire Department and Police Department, incredibly important for the town. First Street Project, the rainy day fund, that, that's something that's huge. We've managed to maintain that, and it's a real boon for Trinidad. I mean, that's over $2 million at this point, that in the event of an emergency, we're self-funded to cover that. Very few cities have something like that. It's been a boon of the marijuana industry. Oh, as an aside, if we can bring more people to town, that's another way to save the marijuana industry. More people here who will use those stores. Progress all around town for ADA, then the Lodging Tax Advisory Board reworked, and the Monument Lake restructure, I think anyone that's been there has seen improvement there. And we're undertaking a golf course restructure, that's gonna be huge, be willing to talk to anybody about that. And then something that we just did, the baseball field in Trinidad's gonna be reworked too. So that's a real crown jewel for Trinidad. People gather there for games, and it's gonna be, in 150 days, it is going to be a place that people will be proud to be there, and they'll be proud to invite people to. So I think we've done a lot, I would really dearly love the opportunity for another four years to help. My name's Janet Williamson, I'm asking for your vote, and my tagline is standing tall for Trinidad. Thank you. Okay, folks, we're gonna wrap it up. And in doing that, I wanna thank Ben from the Chronicle, we're, must be taking photos, myself, the, 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 however, if you can remember this beautiful facility, Si, and I don't know your friend's name.
Diane.
Diane, provided refreshments, everyone that attended, Hot Yoga, Man was one of our sponsors. And one of the lessons that I, that I got from my mother, who whenever anybody did something for them, and I'm saying this on behalf of myself and the community, to the people that are running, is thank you, thank you, thank you.